And the time is six thirty.
We're having a special board meeting tonight, too.
We're gonna call both meetings to order.
You just say it's time. Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. It's the Maraga, we're in the fire district. Regular board meeting November nineteenth, twenty twenty five and a special board meeting November nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The meeting will start at six thirty for the closed session. So I'll call the meeting to order.
And so we are calling the meeting to order for both the regular and special meetings.
Okay.
Director Danziger.
Here.
Director Jex. He is attending, so he probably is attending late.
Okay.
Director Romer.
Here.
President Hassler.
Here.
And President Hassler is attending by Zoom from Columbia and Vice President Jorgens.
Here.
Can we have the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the states and their communities. Here's a great cloud that overflows and stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
So we will now take public comment for both the regular and special agendas. And we do not have any public comment. So we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session for both the regular and special agendas.
And we expect to start the regular session again at seven PM. Thank you.
Time is six thirty two.
This is Greg. Uh, go into the closed session. Okay, I'm sorry. I was confused. All right, I will do that right now. Okay, bye.
You got a non-personal note to be on, can't do it over.
I mean, she's gonna, I know some. People sound like that when I understand it.
Usually there's walkways in the chief to deal with the situation.
To deal with, like, sure. Yeah, I mean, we did include the tax. I agree with that.
Michael, will you unmute the microphones? Okay. All right, the time is 7:03.
Welcome back. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll have a roll call, please.
Director Danziger.
Here.
Director Jex is absent. Director Romer.
Here.
President Hassler.
Here.
And President Hassler is participating by Zoom from Columbia and Vice President Jorgens.
Here. Okay, thank you. So, uh, reporting from the special session that we had.
I'm sorry.
So I'm gonna, we have a minor report out from the special session, or one item in the special session. The board has authorized the chief to, uh, to negotiate, uh, to settle the, uh, to deal with the claim that was filed. And that's all but report from the special session.
Okay. Item six, we should adjourn this special.
Oh, and there was nothing, yeah, so we're adjourning the special session and there was nothing to report out from the regular, the special, regular session.
Okay, and the time is 7:04. Item six, point one.
Yeah, announcements, uh, and the brief information, all the reports to meetings attended by a director at district expense. Do we have any of those?
No.
None, okay. Questions, information, comments from board members and staff? None?
None.
Communications received?
We did receive one communication from, uh, Councilwoman Tracy Park from the 11th District. Um, appreciation for the firefighting efforts down in Southern California.
Right.
Appreciate the appreciation.
Bar chief updates? Can you turn mine down a little bit?
Good evening, directors. We have a brief finance report this evening. Uh, we'll start with the strike team reimbursement update. The strike team receivable for, uh, 2025 fiscal year 2025 was $1.8 million. We've received payments of $1.8 million, so we have no receivable outstanding from fiscal year '25. All the invoices have been paid. Estimated for fiscal year 2026, uh, a strike team receivable of $815,000. We have received payments of $153,000 and we have $661,000 outstanding. For fiscal year 2025, all invoices have been paid. And for fiscal year 2026, uh, the numbers are based on F-42s and invoices that have been received to date. Next slide, please. Treasury bill update. The district now has $17,520,000 invested in treasury bills. The trust, treasury bill maturity dates are listed below. And staff continue to project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when treasury bills mature. Other items, four new single, four new hires, single role paramedics were incorporated into the payroll system, tell, tell a staff system in October. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Human resources.
Hi, good evening, directors. We give it a nice, uh. HR report in absence of our HR manager, beginning with our senior single role recruitment. The, uh, application period opened in October and closed October 31st. Uh, in total, we've received 14 applications, eight met the minimum qualifications. Um, and we brought them forward for interviews. Uh, of the eight, one withdrew the day of the interview. So we interviewed seven candidates, um, in total. Three candidates successfully passed the interview and skill stations and will be, uh, brought forward in the chief's interview. Uh, for the single role paramedic recruitment, um, application periods, uh, open. In total, uh, 18 applications were received, uh, 13 met the minimum qualifications and we're looking to schedule, uh, that process later, uh, in December. Uh, for the single role EMT hiring, um, we've, uh, taken the top, uh, top four candidates, um, that made the eligibility list. And, uh, and have, um, as the names that you see before you have completed the two-week onboarding with those, uh, with those applicants, um, that are now employees. Uh, of that, uh, one person to note is, uh, Tyler Opdeik, um, who was a fuels mitigation specialist, uh, that began with our district, uh, January 2nd of 2024. Uh, Tyler, uh, self-funded his EMT, um, school, uh, while working full-time with us as a, uh, fuels mitigation specialist. Um, and then now has progressed to an EMT. Um, we're very, uh, very fortunate to have him and the other three candidates that are now employees, uh, that have joined our ranks and are currently under provisionary status, which I'll update more in the operations report. Uh, this concludes, uh, HR update pending any questions.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, directors. Fire prevention efforts for October 2025 were focused on ensuring compliance, supporting mitigation work, assisting with public inquiries, and preparing for the upcoming code changes as we move into the new year. Staff continue to work closely with property owners and real estate professionals to ensure compliance during property transfer inspections. As expected, this time of year, exterior hazard inspection volume is slowing due to seasonal weather. To date, staff has completed a total of 2,975 inspections and are working diligently to close the remaining 66 open cases. We are seeing an increase in plan review activity likely due to the 2025 code cycle taking effect on January 1st, 2026. This is typical trend in the year before new codes are adopted. If you look at the plan review total completed year, or plan review completed yearly totals on the report, you can see a surge occurs every three years. For example, in 2022, we received 409 planned submittals ahead of the last code update. And we're seeing the same pattern again right now with more expected before the end of this year. As plan reviews increase, inspection workload also increases, which is reflected in the rise in new construction inspections from 11th of September to 16th in October. Chipping needs have remained consistent. Um, with five operational days this month, supporting ongoing vegetation mitigation efforts throughout the community. For state mandated inspections, both apartments and schools continue to result. The fire inspector is actively following up with non-compliant apartment complexes to help them get to resolution. All schools have now received their initial inspections. Two were compliant when this report was submitted. That number has since been updated to four. We are working to, to resolve the remaining, the remaining campuses to resolve outstanding deficiencies. $100 citations were issued to two Arinda schools that reported full compliance but were later found to be non-compliant during reinspection. And lastly, the Home Harding Grant Program also remains a valuable resource for residents seeking to strengthen wildfire resilience. End of report pending any questions.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so the first one I wanted to ask was actually not something on the report. And, um, um, the former Cal Shakes, uh, property. Um, has been, um, now it's being leased to a new entity, Siesta Valley, and I just wanted to know, are you involved with that? Um, property now of, of getting it in compliance, because I've been up there recently. And it's, it's, it looked pretty messy to me. It needs, it needs a lot of work, I thought, to, before they will start doing any work there. And I just wondered if, if you're already involved with that.
Yeah, um, our, someone has reached out to our fuse mitigation specialist manager. Um, he's been to the property and conducted inspection on the property.
If I may add to that, sir, it's not just the vegetation component of the code that needs to be, you know, met. It's also, it's an A occupancy, so there's evacuation, other fire code issues. I, when, as fire marshal a few years ago, I had been up there dealing with them, uh, educating them on those requirements for exits and lighting. And so we will also need to work with them on those type of issues.
Okay, so you're, you're aware of it, you're.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In contact.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was talking to someone who's involved there and they're already talking about, you know, when their first events are gonna be, and I said, hold on a minute. So, okay. Hey, um, on your, um, citation report, I, I see, um, Safeway on there. Uh, Safeway in Arinda. I was just curious about what's going on with Safeway. It's the top, um, one on the administrative citation report? Anybody?
Oh, I see.
I was just curious to me what, what, what's, what the Safeway.
Most likely that's a vegetation issue, hazard abatement, probably around the property.
Okay.
We can report back to the board, uh, once we confirm what that, um, citation is for, sir.
All right.
Building that I've noticed that needs inspecting is, is the Rite Aid, the part of the Rite Aid that is right next to the post office. Has eight inches of needles on the roof.
Yeah.
And the gutters are completely full and rotting and falling off. I mean, it's a serious problem and probably people don't go back there very often, especially since it's closed now. But I assume this building still has to meet it even if there's nobody in it.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
I've noticed that too, when I was parked at the post office during this.
I will follow up.
Which building was that, sir?
It's the Rite Aid building, you know, it's now, I don't know who owns it now, but it's what it used to be, Rite Aid. It's kind of across from here, you know, it's, um, and it's the back side of that on the. If you're at the post office and walk out the post office, it's the part that's literally the closest to the post office. And it's, it'll be incredibly obvious if you go there in the daytime.
Yes, sir. We will get an inspector out tomorrow.
And, and I want to compliment you. I, I was at a large Firewise meeting earlier tonight. And, uh, a number of the people there had interacted with you recently and were, and said lots of good things.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, directors. Just a brief Zone Zero update. So after the firestorms in Southern California, the governor ordered the Board of Forestry to create the Zone Zero regulations. And have them through the rulemaking process no later than December 31st, 2025. That is not gonna happen. Um, I've been attending the Board of Forestry Zone Zero meetings and, um, there's a lot of public comment. A lot of, um, very passionate opinions on both ways that it, the board should do nothing. And then passionate opinions the other way, the board needs to do more. So we're still waiting to see what the board chooses to do. And they've been presented with, uh, multiple options, um, for, two options for trees and then four options for the vegetation in the five-foot non-combustible zone. I have no idea what they're gonna choose to do. But what I have attached, um, a couple of slides tonight just to show, this was presented at the last Board of Forestry meeting. And something that we've heard, and we even heard it at the Arinda two-by-two meeting, that vegetation next to a structure, um, blocks the heat. And doesn't burn if the vegetation has a high moisture content. So we have a couple, uh, videos, uh, this one you're looking at was done up here, um, in Richmond. Um, and it shows a building with plants, uh, wood pallets 10 feet away, fans 10 feet back from the wood pallets, simulating a 15 mile an hour, um, wind. You can see the setup there. Uh, next slide, please, Marshall. The video on the left is the dry plant test and you'll see the plants ignite, ignite at two minutes. Following the pallets being ignited and the wind being, uh, directed to the flames. Uh, you will see a partial burning of the plants, then a reignition of the plants at four minutes. And please start the first video, Marsha. And this is, directors, is just a good example of why that thought process of putting more vegetation in front of the fire immediately adjacent to homes is a bad idea. So you can see the wind, um, blowing those flames. And remember, that's 10 feet away. So that's 15 mile an hour, simulated 15 mile an hour wind blowing those flames. Um, and you see some direct flame contact to the plants. You saw the plants start to burn. And again, you'll see the remainder of the plants, um, ignite here in just a minute. So we see those plants full consumption by just two and four minutes of that radiant heat on it. The next slide on the right is a well irrigated wet plant test. Again, plant ignition, two minutes following the pallets and then the flame spread over the next two minutes. You can start the next slide, please, or the next video. So again, we see the pallets being ignited. The fans will be turned on here in just a minute. And again, now you can see the vegetation starting to burn based on direct flame impingement as well as radiant heat. And our last slide is one that was done by IBHS. And next slide, please, Marshall. This one is done with 25 mile an hour winds. The simulated vegetation is 20 feet from the target structure. This structure does have a 7A compliant engineered wood. You can see the vegetation is next to but not immediately adjacent to. The time of ignition of the plants is seven minutes. Time to ignition of the wall is seven minutes and 17 seconds. The live fuel moisture for the plants was 163%. Go ahead and start the video, please, Marshall. And as we see those plants ignite, now we have a lot of direct flame impingement on the wall of that structure. And again, that is a 7A compliant wood or siding to that simulated structure. And, Marshall, can you go back to stop it? I think it was right about in there. So, directors, what I wanted to call out on this is the fire that's starting on the structure right there isn't a super intense fire. It is a non-combustible siding that took so much heat that it's now combusting. So this is why it's so important to have our homes hardened, the vent mesh, the ember resistant, non-combustible siding, vegetation outside of that five-foot zone. But in a case like this, this is where the actions of the firefighters come in. It's the three components taken together. True non or true zone zero, no vegetation in that five-foot zone, home hardening and the actions of firefighters that help prevent the loss of structures. But I just wanted to play this because we have heard a lot of people on the Zone Zero Board of Forestry meetings. And again, here locally that are saying, hey, vegetation actually absorbs the heat and prevents the house from burning. I think we've shown in the last three videos why that is not the case. More to come and more to follow. I continue to follow the Board of Forestry meetings, but just wanted to, you know, show the board and give you a brief update.
No question, but on where they showed especially the pallets, would the direct flame, you think, be enough to, if there were windows there, to to crack a window and get in through a window or not?
It's possible, sir. It depends if those windows are, you know, meet the current fire code and the WUWE standards window double.
Good double pay.
Yeah, and like this one, we're not that wood siding, there's a good chance this non-combustible wood siding is going to burn out and not continue to progress. But it's just it's something that we need to be aware of that having that vegetation there. And it's different vegetation, you know, obviously, this is three to four feet high. If you have a succulent that's low growing to the ground, it's obviously not going to produce the flame lengths that that vegetation did. So I believe, you know, the one thing the board will do is give the local entity us some ability to say, hey, you can have low-growing succulents within that zone, especially, you know, with the 7A siding there.
What is a 7A siding?
7A refers to the section of the building code, sir. So that was the area that deals with all the WUWE standards, the non-combustible, the ember.
Right, but what? What I mean, is it just wood siding or is it what what is it?
It could be the hardy board. There are multiple products that can be found in that chapter 7A that meet the standard.
Okay, well, hardy board is made of cement and I don't care what you try to burn it with, it just plain won't burn. And this did burn, so this is either the paint on the outside of it that burned and went out quickly or, you know, and wood siding at some point will burn. But there's a big difference between wood siding and hardy board siding.
Correct, sir, but they, to be considered 7A compliant, they have to go through the state fire marshal testing. So they take so much heat for a certain amount of time. The wood, obviously, the hardy board, the concrete or a non-combustible, you know, brick or block wall, obviously, is not going to burn. But this is a 7A compliant siding that did, you know, catch fire. It took a lot of heat, you know, it took seven minutes of heat before it started to combust.
And so the, you know, I don't know what this was. They called it something or cladding or something, I don't know what it was that they they're burning. But the the pallets, so what what is that supposed to approximate in the real world? Because people don't usually have pallets next to their house. They have trees, they have bushes, they have things, but you know, dry pallet wood that's not super dense, but it's nicely spaced, so it has lots of air. What does that supposed to approximate?
This is simulating radiant heat and direct flame impingement from 20 feet away from your structure. It could be bushes burning. This is, it's just to simulate, hey, vegetation in that five-foot zone is going to burn. It is, you know, but is it realistic to show, you know, a single tree burning, a single bush burning? No, this, the whole purpose of this test was to show that vegetation in that zone catches fire. It doesn't resist fire like people are claiming it does. And it, after so long, after seven minutes, was able to catch a 7A compliant wood siding on fire. That that's all that was to show was to prove the vegetation there doesn't do what folks are claiming it does.
Yeah.
Or what they assumed it was to do. I still agree, sir, we've had numerous discussions that having a hardy board siding and having some low-growing succulents or shrubs there isn't going to do what this did. Those, like I said, four to five foot high vegetation that catches fire and increases the heat onto that building.
The good news is I've only heard one person, which I think we both heard, that thought that things didn't burn. And I guess they just had never seen a forest fire.
Absolutely.
The, but the other thing this says to me is, and I think our code says this and, you know, it doesn't, you shouldn't have continuous large amounts of brush and or in this case, probably hedges too close to your house because they can, at least for a little while, have a lot, make a lot of heat and, you know, provide a large flame. And if you had spaces between your bushes, which I think we require or at least recommend. And so it wasn't one big ball of flame like this, it would probably help a lot.
Yes.
The far out stuff.
Right. And one thing, the one of the options the Board of Forestry is considering is allowing vegetation, you know, low-growing shrubs and succulents in that five-foot zone, as long as they're not under a window or near a vent or some area that can allow fire to penetrate into the house.
Depending on the kind of siding you have, that might make sense, but.
Yes.
Interesting.
But those are not part of option one.
I don't believe that is part of option four. Correct, sir.
Yeah, good. Well, I guess we're going to have to keep waiting then, it sounds like. Thank you, good update. And you ought to show these to that person who was in our two by two.
I was thinking of having these slides at the next two by two, sir.
Perfect.
Good evening, directors. I'll be giving tonight's operational report since the last time we met of significant events throughout our district. Next slide. And this is beginning with what we believe is our last, our last prescribed fire of this year before the significant rain, although we do have more projects on the horizon, as we'll hear from Dennis here shortly. This was on November 4th in in the community of Canyon on the Segora Tape property. Cooperation cooperation with Cal Fire, East Bay Regional Park District. And of course, our staff conducted the burn approximately three acres. Next slide. This is on October 29th. Chief Isaacs and myself, staff attended apparent information night at Miramani High School in Arinda. This is one of a series of town hall type of meetings to to provide information, resources in collaboration with the city of Arinda and Arinda PD to inform our citizens, including the the parents of the students that attend our schools throughout our district. Next slide. Last month, all crews, all shifts were afforded the opportunity to attend a training here in district where we contracted with with some rope rescue technician specialists to come and host a training of what I believe is a low-frequency, high-risk skill. So this is something of of high angle that better prepares our firefighters for both high angle and for proficiencies on our low-angle rescues as well. As we've seen these calls, particularly in the Canyon Pinehurst area, especially this time of year and the slippery times off the roadways, our attendance to these calls and a shout out to Rescue One for allowing us and to attend this training that they funded for us. It was well received by our personnel. And and with that, also like to recognize Wendy Bunch on the Rescue One board that has submitted her retirement of the board. We appreciate her years of service and we're able to wish her in her retirement futures. So thank you, Wendy. Next slide.
And one question before you move on.
Yes, please.
Is is using ropes like that, is that a like a certification that our firefighters have? You have to go through the class and you get certified so you can do it or?
It certainly is. This this course was not, we did not receive a certification. However, there are certification levels due to the cost, the time, so forth. We, it was, it was more focused towards awareness and refreshment. See where our folks are at. Many of our folks, most of our folks have certifications. But again, like I mentioned, this is a low-frequency, high-risk and and to brush off the cobwebs and expose some of the weaknesses that we may have.
So if you need, if you needed, if you had an incident where you needed this kind of expertise and nobody was on duty, you call somebody, I mean.
Yes, yes, and we we have a cooperation with other partners, Contra Costa County Fire to our east and Oakland Fire to our west, along with our, we have a number of different rescue teams. We work in collaboration with them. So we carry a medium complement, high angle, I would consider that as a as a heavy complement. We would use our resources locally.
Okay, thanks.
This, this flyer is a recruitment flyer for our senior single role. As we heard from the HR update, we have indeed closed this recruitment as of October 31st and conducted the hiring. We've brought forward three candidates to our fire chiefs interview that we'll be scheduling over the next week. Next slide. And just to elaborate, our single, single role EMT program finished last Friday. Our folks have now joined the ranks, as I mentioned, on a provisional status where their focus is to integrate into with our crews and learn our our fire district, our response standards, the county protocols and and our standards here at MOFD. Much of the focus of the EMTs is with driving along with simulated emergencies throughout our district. I want to recognize our ambulance supervisor, Niels Tangerlini, along with the crews. That's firefighter, paramedic, Matt Cooper, Captain Mike Lacy, firefighter Eddie Epperson, that that really went above and beyond, volunteered their time to participate, wrote lesson plans and help these folks through the process. Next slide.
So before you go on.
Sir.
So these folks, the EMTs, they're going on calls now?
They are, yes.
With the senior medics we hired or with our crew?
Both. So the the deployment of of the EMTs, so in total, we have four EMTs, as I mentioned.
Yeah.
Three EMTs have been located at Station 41 on Medic 41. And then the fourth, just because we have three shifts, the fourth is at Station 45. And they've been paired up with the crews and with the with the single role paramedics as well, based on the skill levels and then the correct placements with the supervisors where they began as a crawl, walk, run mentality is how we base our trainings. So the crawl portion would be the two-week onboarding. The walk portion is where they're currently at in the provisionalary status where they, based on the captain or supervisor's confidence to begin driving and then work up to driving code three to to emergencies. But between the four, there's an eclectic background of experience. So some some bring a robust experience to the job where some it's it's new to them.
And and so there are the EMTs, are they, they're not working, are they, what's their shift? Are they working 24 or 10s or?
They've joined the ranks with the same firefighter schedules.
Oh, they do.
Yes, so they've been assigned to shifts and we and we work 48 hours on with 96 hours.
So the ones that are at 41, how about the one at 45, are they same?
Same, yes.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so they've been assigned to the crews on shifts, just just like the rest of staff.
Do they go through drive, you know, driving a big, heavy vehicle like that is different than driving your car or even your pickup? Do we send them through some sort of a driving course?
Most definitely. And 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 I'll address that, Marshall, if you don't mind skipping forward, I think there's two slides. That's right here. So this is emergency vehicle operations. We partnered with Alameda County Sheriff's Office where we put people out, this is near Santa Rita Jail, where we put people out with with specialists. And I want to recognize their program as well, where these are retired law enforcement officers. Much of this is focused on collision avoidance, code three driving. There you see, that's the skid pad to to allow what to do in emergency situations, should you lose traction on roadways. The picture on the left is our ambulance that we brought. And those are, that's focused on spatial awareness, angle of approach, angle of departure, high centering, high maneuverability with with our own equipment. So it's kind of a broad skill, but as I mentioned, as the primary job of operating the ambulance, that's where much of this two-week onboarding has been focused.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall, if you don't mind going back one. I put this in here as a, as a, as a reminder and an update that per our alignment of our capital funding goals, we have received the A cardiac monitors. And they are working through the in-service trainings of our crew. This is a big step. These monitors will go on our first out equipment. This is the cutting edge of what is available and 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 kind of send us into the next steps of what can be for cardiac monitoring. And I think the other thing to note is what is the abilities as this technology improves, has the ability to accept that through software upgrades and things from from the vendor. So these are. So these are, uh, these are currently in our possession and, and training and, and we should see the, uh, on our equipment over the next few weeks.
Can you tell, can you mention what, what it's called again?
Those are LifePak 35, uh, cardiac monitors.
Thanks.
Next slide. Uh, this is a, a leadership training, uh, that we hosted here in this room, uh, hosted by, uh, and led by, uh, Jason Gardner, who is a retired, uh, US Navy SEAL and decorated combat leader of over 30 years in operational experience of our armed forces. He represents Echelon Front, uh, he led the discussion for our staff. And this focused primarily on managers, supervisors and aspiring, um, uh, personnel, uh, of our staff to attend. This was focused on, uh, disciplined teamwork, ownership, decision-making principles that we apply here in the fire service, regardless of, of, of what the occupation is and, and certainly gave us some lessons learned, um, through his high stress situations. Chief Isaacs, um, uh, want to recognize chief for bringing this forward to our staff. We were able to have, uh, a large attendance, as you can see, and we're very appreciative to, to have hosted that here in district. An update, uh, also on our capital, uh, budget was, was two ambulance remounts. This is one of two. So again, uh, this ambulance was, is a new cabin chassis. We took the box off of the old one that had over 130,000 miles on it. Put it on a new refreshed cabin chassis. Uh, this is currently in our possession, uh, pending the, uh, in-service and the inventory inspections that's required by the county. So over the next few weeks, we hope to get this in service as soon as possible. Next slide. Uh, I want to make note, this is, uh, this is a training, um, a training picture. This occurred in the very early mornings of, uh, of November on BART, uh, inter-agency collaboration with Oakland Fire, uh, BART, ourselves, and of course, our, uh, MOFD volunteers as well. This is a simulated smoked out train, uh, approximately 2:00 AM in the morning, uh, in BART in the Berkeley Hills Tunnel. Next slide. And this is one of our firefighters that's, uh, conducting during the training, um, some of our MCI, our rapid triage of the patient, simulated patient. And I want to recognize, uh, Battalion Chief John Benzley for organizing this. This is a huge undertaking. In addition, next slide. Our volunteers, uh, that, uh, this is them before, uh, before the, the moulage. And, uh, that added a different element to us and for our partners in Oakland Fire, um, of simulated patients on the BART train. They showed up in the middle of the night, early morning that participated. So please, uh, I want to extend our thank you to them. Pending any questions, this concludes my report.
Great job.
Thank you.
And this is, uh, the upcoming events that's also listed on our agenda. For now, we can open public comment for the announcements. And we do not, we do not have any public comment. Now we can open public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And we do not have any public comment.
Do we have any people online, brother?
We do. We have one attendee.
Thank you. Okay, uh, onto the consent agenda. Is there any comment on the consent agenda? Public comment?
So public comment's open for consent. And we do not have any comment for on consent.
So we'll close public comment on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I just wanted to just make one quick comment, not, I just want to, I don't need to pull the item. I think it's okay to just make a comment on the item. Is that okay without pulling? Just, I, um, read through, uh, the, uh, the, uh, fina- comprehensive financial report. Very detailed, and I just want to thank our staff for the excellent report and, um, the auditors, I think, did a really good job. And that report just provides, I mean, if anyone in the public especially ever wants to know about what's going on, I mean, that, it was, it was very detailed. And it, I, I thought it was a very good, good job, so.
Thank you, sir. I'll pass that word on.
Thank our staff too.
Yep. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It sounded like Director.
Uh, your microphone, please.
Go ahead.
It sounded like Director Danziger was starting to make one, is that correct?
Oh, uh, okay. I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
This is Romer, I'll second.
Okay.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye. It, it passes. So the regular agenda, the first reading of the ordinance 2601, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code, including specified tendencies and as modified with local amendments and by reference, the International Fire Code, 2024 edition, published by the International Code Council and repealing ordinance 2301, adopting findings, supporting the local amendments and adopting the finding that the ordinance is exempt from review under California of our Metal Quality Act.
You repeat it though.
Yeah. That's a long one.
Good evening, directors. Next item before you is just the first reading of ordinance 2601. This happens every three years when we update the fire code. The state, uh, office of the state fire marshal updates our code. So it triggers us to update ours. It causes us to review our local amendments to make sure they're still appropriate. The fire marshal worked with the county fire marshal group, similar to what I did three years ago, to bring forward our local amendments, aligning the local amendments. We brought this to the board for just a draft, uh, review and discussion last month. I think there's a slide, correct, Marsha, that has a couple of the definitions. So in chapter two, we're adding to our local codes, the definition of a mo- mobile food dispensing vehicle. These vehicles have a commercial grade kitchen in there and they're being missed. Nobody's doing inspections. We've had a couple of very small, minor fires in our, um, local food trucks. So we're adding that definition in the, uh, code to allow us the ability to inspect those commercial grade kitchens that are in there. Um, and then the fire service, um, features, the building and facilities, just cleaning up, uh, some of the language there, with the widths and the extensions, um, for the length of the, the driveways. So what we do right now is you can't go past 150 feet, 150 feet of a driveway triggers, um, turnarounds, but we usually get a lot of modification requests because in certain areas of the district, people need to go past the 150 feet. So this is just allowing us that flexibility to extend past that 150 feet. And it calls out for certain turnarounds and turnouts along that 150 feet. Next slide, please, Marsha. We added another section, um, in chapter five, fire service features for the Knox box and the keypad. The county is submitting for a Knox box, um, grant. And if the county's successful, it will trigger us to do some stuff with our Knox boxes. So we're just updating that language. And then you see the turnarounds, um, that are in diagrams that will be added to our fire code.
So if somebody has a long driveway today, and so this stuff, effectively, everybody's grandfather that's already got one. If you, but when, you know, if you build a new house at the end of a long road, or if you do more than a 50% remodel at the end of a long road, you now have to put in an 18 foot wide road?
That's one of the things that we look at, sir. So letter of the law, yeah. If you're existing today, it's what we call existing non-conforming, but you really conformed with the code at the time of construction. So if somebody wants to do something today, yes, the new portions of the code come in. And we have a couple of cases right now where they are looking to do something new. They are changing the status quo. So they need to meet today's standards, but based on the slope, uh, and other features that make a strict interpretation of the code, um, impractical, we work with them to grant modifications. So the modifications can't lessen fire safety, but what are some same practical effects that we could do? Maybe we do have turnarounds. Maybe we go a little bigger on turnarounds. Maybe they sprinkle or the building. Maybe they put a hydrant closer. Maybe there's some, um, Class A roofing material. But there's all sorts of options that are out there for the property owners to bring forward and we'll sit with them and try to, um, find that happy medium.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
The staff recommends, uh, discuss deliberately introduce and waive the full reading of ordinance 26 dash 01. And also, if I may, directors, if approved tonight, we will send this to the town and city planning departments for their consideration. They have 30 days to review it, get any comments back to us.
So my, my reading of it was there were, you did a great job of putting out a red line. Thank you. And there were, other than things you just showed, and a few formatting things that you took out of this paragraph and put it in a different paragraph, very little changed would be my interpretation of this, especially that would affect sort of regular citizens. So I, I think it should be easy to explain to and get approved by our, you know, the, the town and the city, so.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of, couple of questions.
Please.
Or comments. Um, so I was just looking at the changes and you went through what they were. So I, just a few questions on the changes. Food trucks. So food trucks. I know we have them here in Arinda on Thursdays, but I also see food trucks. There's one near your admin office, you, you know, there's one, there's another one in Maraga I see occasionally. So those require to have county health inspections, but do, do we, right now, do we go out, you know, like that one that parks over near your office office? Do you go out and, and look at that or?
We do not, sir, because it's not in the code, so.
It's not in the code now, but it will be.
Yes, sir. And to your point, county health goes out to look for food safety. California Highway Patrol looks at the safe operation of the vehicle. Nobody's looking at that commercial grade kitchen. So if you took that same kitchen from that food truck and put it into a building, it now triggers inspections and, uh, fire protection systems. But you take that kitchen and move, put it in a mobile vehicle and there's no fire safety.
So is, is this what we're adding here? This is new though, right?
That definition's new. We took the definition from, I think, the ICC, the International Code, put it into our code to allow us. There is an inspection, um, area in the code now or in the 21, uh, 26 code. So us having that definition triggers the inspection that falls under that.
Okay. And so, um, and so you're looking at the kitchen part, you're looking to have fire extinguishers, things like that, right?
Correct, sir.
So are you anticipating that if this passes, it has to go through the, the town and the city, right? And then you would actually go out and maybe let the people know, here's, here's what, here's what's going to happen and?
Yes, sir. We would do, um, an education and outreach and education. And we had, um, for the, the Thursday night food vendors in Arinda, we had issues with one of their trucks and a lack of a fire protection system. And we worked with them. They, there was a significant pushback from the, the vendor because no other fire agency was inspecting them. But we inspected them because of the conditions that were present. Um, and it was just a requirement to have a fire, the appropriate level fire extinguisher on hand.
How could you do that before this?
There was a provision in the old code based on their cooking, how they were like a rotisserie. So because they had flames and it was outside the truck, it, um, some language about vapors and the dripping grease triggered us to be able to require the fire extinguisher.
Are, are these, uh, is this section like on food trucks, is this going to be something? I, I know you've coordinated and, and, and the fire marshal with the county. Is this something that's going to be countywide or, or someplace already have it?
If I remember correctly, the other fire marshals weren't interested, but they hadn't had, they were surprised when we said we had two active fires and food trucks. And, and that was triggering.
This might be specific to Arinda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before you move off food truck, I have a question.
You can go.
So do we care where they park? So I can imagine, for example, if they park under a tree and they aren't very far away and they have a fire, it starts the tree on fire. So in some parts of the world, they don't allow open flames, you know, in the summertime, for example, outside open flames. You can't have fires in fireplace, all kinds of things in Tahoe, for example. So are we going to care if they park underneath a pine tree or a eucalyptus tree or something that, you know?
No.
Depending on how close it is?
I wouldn't say vegetation. I'd be concerned if they were parking next to a gas station or a propane tank or, or something like that. Where if the truck caught fire, um, you know, immediately adjacent to a building where the fire could spread to the building. Now, if it was immediately adjacent to large open space, yeah, we would probably, but a couple of trees, um, doesn't concern me as much as it does, um, a building.
Now that you've said that, not pointing fingers, however, in Maraga, there is a truck that parks at a gas station.
That is true, sir.
But nothing in this would, would prohibit that, right?
I don't think there's anything in the code right now that would.
Maybe, maybe you should think about it. I, I don't know.
My only point is, you know, do you want to broaden it a little bit?
Yeah.
You have a little bit more, you know, if you think there's a dangerous situation being caused by them, you should be able to make a move if nothing else.
Right. At least tell them. And, and so, um, and so the other proposed changes, um, on what Director Jorgens was talking about, the maximum distance for turnarounds and, in the, the dead end road. So those are new. That's, those are new requirements, right?
The 150 feet requiring the approved fire apparatus turnaround i- is not new. That has been in the code. We're just extending saying, hey, you can go past 150 feet.
Okay.
But to do that, you're going to have to do these things. The dead end road has been in the Board of Forestry Title 14 regulations for SRA for many years. That is now going to apply to the very high. And even I think the high zones with the change, the emergency regulations, the, uh, state fire marshal did. So that is one of the areas we're working with our local partners, um, to educate them. Um, and the next item, the wooi code addresses some of those things that the city and town are now going to have to, um, be aware of. And MOFD, we now, in the wooi code, will have to enforce setbacks. So that is a pretty significant change for the city and town planning department. So we're in discussion with them, how that process looks and how it's going to work going forward.
And, um, on the Knox boxes? Just curious, do, do, do we know all the Knox boxes in our district?
No, we do not, sir.
So if the, if this change goes into effect, how's the homeowner, the property owner going to know?
Right. Again, ed- education and outreach. So if we show up to a house and go to use a Knox box and it doesn't meet this code, this is, uh, opportunity for the fire marshal and the fire prevention staff to go out and say, hey, here's the new requirement. There's no citation. There's nothing. But it's a new requirement that you have to meet. Um, and what the county grant is, right now, each agency has their own special key. And so if CON FIRE comes into our district, our immediately surrounding CON FIRE units have our key. But say we're getting a unit from Concord or somewhere that doesn't have our key, we're trying to go to a, one key for the county.
Does, does, and I don't know this, I'm just going to ask the question. So there's, um, like fire roads that have gates and locks on them. Is that like a Knox box type of situation or is that, like, there's one behind the nursery in, in Arinda that goes up to Wilder? And I, I walk up there a lot. There's a big old bar with several locks on it. Is that?
That one, yes, is a Knox locks.
Oh, it is.
We've had issues with, um, the residents in Wilder and others cutting our lock. Our, um, standard, uh, fire road lock is just a master lock and, um, all fire agencies have the key. So East Bay Mud, East Bay Parks, we all have the key to get into the, the fire locks. But we do see a lot of our locks being cut, you know?
There's, there's several locks on that particular one. I've, I've just noticed it the, the other day. I guess if, if fire wanted to get up there, you can get in, I'm sure. I guess if if fire wanted to get up there, you can get in, I'm sure.
Yeah, we we have what we call the master key, which are uh bolt cutters. But I'm gonna send somebody out there because there's only supposed to be our lock on that gate, that has been a.
Just recently, I think it was last weekend, there were more than one lock on there for that, so. Okay, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, so now we're supposed to um, I guess we need to go down a little further, do we have any public comments on this?
And so we will open public comment on item nine point one for the fire code. And we do not have any public comment.
This is Director Romer.
I need you to.
Thank you. This is Director Romer, I'd like to introduce and waive the full reading of ordinance twenty six dash oh one. An ordinance of MOFD adopting the twenty twenty five edition of the California Fire Code, including the specified appendices and as modified with local amendments. And by reference, the International Fire Code twenty oh twenty four edition. Uh, and repealing ordinance twenty three dash oh one, adopting findings supporting the local amendments. And adopting a finding that the ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
And and direct staff to schedule the public hearing for January twenty one, twenty twenty six.
Uh, and direct staff, yes, to schedule the public hearing for January twenty first, twenty twenty six. At which time the board will consider enacting the proposed ordinance.
I'll second.
Marshall?
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on to item.
Item nine point two, first reading of ordinance twenty six zero two, adopting the twenty twenty five California Wildland Urban Interface Code.
Good evening, directors, uh very similar to the last item, this is uh the first reading of ordinance twenty six oh two. The wooi code is a new code um that was brought in this year as part of the code adoption process. Um, what the wooi code does, it takes all the wooi requirements of the wildland urban interface requirements that were previously found in the residential code, section R three three seven, the building code, chapter seven A, and the fire code, chapter forty nine. So it takes all those sections and puts it into one code book, which is the wooi code. The wooi code will now apply in all state responsibility area, all very high fire hazard severity zones and local responsibility area. And um because of emergency rulemaking that the Office of the State Fire Marshal did, it will now apply in also high fire hazard severity zones and local responsibility area. This triggered a lot of questions for us because we have created a wildland urban interface fire area back in, I think it was twenty one um for the building construction and we and we adopted the latest fire hazard severity zone maps. We updated that wooi area to include the entire fire district. And what I told the board at that time was creating that designation was for building construction only. So when the Office of the State Fire Marshal said, hey, this wooi code is going to apply in the very high, high and any wildland urban interface fire area, we became concerned that we were taking this wooi code and having to apply it district wide, which was not what um I had told the board. So we worked with district council and we went through everything. And for us, only the building portions of the wooi code, a building standard will apply district wide, which we're already doing. So any new construction still has to comply with the ember resistant or what is previously known as the chapter seven A requirements. The change that the wooi code does do is in the very high fire hazard severity zones, we are going to have to work with our local partners in Arinda and Maraga and the planning department on how we address the setbacks, because the fire district now gets to weigh in on setback issues in those areas um for new construction. So those are ongoing dialogues, um and that is the wooi code. Um, we did bring this to the board last month for um a draft code, just to give you a chance to see it and um give some questions, Marshall, I believe there's a a slide. So we changed uh section one point one point two, the purpose um to have it apply in the very high and the high fire hazards severity zones. But we also added language in chapter four and five that those would apply district wide. Chapter six, which is the non-building standards, will only apply in the very high fire hazard severity zones. Um, next slide, please. Um, road width, so what we found when we were reviewing both codes is there was a discrepancy between our new roads at twenty eight feet, the fire code, which has roads at twenty feet, and then the wooi code, which had some roads at eighteen feet. So we um went through and we put everything up to our roadway standard, so any new road is twenty eight feet. Um, you can see in section four oh three point one point two, um if it has two lanes to travel, it's fourteen feet instead of the ten feet in the wooi code to give us the twenty eight. And then if it's a single lane, it's um you know, the the fourteen foot and then all driveway shall be constructed to provide a minimum of one eighteen foot lane, traffic lane. And we talked about that, if there's existing construction today that has fourteen feet or twelve feet and they're doing something new and the topography of the slope uh doesn't allow them to get to eighteen feet, we're gonna work with them and find um those areas for modification. Uh, we added four oh three point one point four, uh that um any new road shall not exceed the ten percent grade, grades greater than ten percent have to be approved by the fire code official. So we do allow grades greater than uh ten percent, but it might have to be grooved concrete or um an engineered road that will handle the um weight of the fire engines, but will allow for traction of the fire engines to get up. We do have areas in the district right now that a fire engine is not gonna make it up. The roads were built previous to the new um standards of fire engines, the size, the weight, and there are sections where we're going to be what we call handjacking hose, dragging fire hose up a driveway if that place were to ever catch fire. Uh, next slide, please, Marshall.
So I have a.
Yes.
So at the moment, I know you said this a couple of minutes ago about the other code, but so if somebody's at the end of a hundred foot road and it's currently, you know, a single lane driveway, because most people don't drive both directions in a driveway at the same time, you know, past people. Um, is eighteen, what's a normal, you know, just when you have a regular old driveway that's fifty feet long, how long is your, how wide is your driveway normally?
Um, we have some driveways in the district that are ten feet, you know, that are, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years old. Um, we like to see them at least sixteen feet, the code, new code is saying any new driveway eighteen feet wide. And the thought is for the evacuation, if a resident's trying to get out and we need to get in, at the same time, we can um safely pass each other. But one of the things that we will look at and talk to the property owner about is if they're doing that new construction and it's existing non-conforming, is there areas they can put a small turnout where their private vehicle can pull into that turnout and allow the fire apparatus to get by? That's if they're doing something new, but remember, this is just, these codes are for new construction, not to go back to something that exists today, unless that property owner is doing something new that triggers us.
Yeah, I guess that, you know, it's kind of like we we only require you to put in sprinklers when it's more than, you know, when you're fixing more than half of it, then now it's new construction. But if you're not changing the size of it, are you really changing the danger that there is relative to what you are today um for from a fire truck standpoint? I I don't know, it just seems, because all of a sudden, hey, I want to remodel my house and it happens to be at the end of a two hundred foot driveway, now you're gonna make assuming the topography would allow it, you're gonna say, oh, well, you had a twelve foot driveway, now you have an eighteen foot driveway. And you know, that adds a lot to your cost of building, you're doing, you know, remodeling your house, I'm just saying, that's a.
No, I I absolutely agree, sir. So if you're remodeling your house, that's not gonna trigger it. What triggers it is, say, I want to do a lot, uh I want to subdivide my lot and build a new structure up there.
Adds square footage to your house, to me, that makes sense, because now there's more to burn and then, you know, I get that.
E- even if somebody met the um substantial addition alteration portion of the fire code, I would not trigger the road standard for that, because that substantial alteration addition is gonna trigger the sprinklers, which is going to buy us time to get there. So I'm not worried about the road width as much as I am that, hey, I'm now gonna subdivide, I'm gonna put a second house with an ADU up there. And as you said, now there's more, more people up there, there's more to burn. So now we do need um to look at the roadway width, but if it's just a a remodel like that, we're not requiring that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Again, the turnarounds in four oh three point one point six, we're just uh adding the language for the fourteen foot lanes. Uh, chapter five again is um changing the language that the, all of the building um standards in chapter five five apply to the entire district like they do right now today.
Okay, so are there more questions from the board?
No, uh, just a a general question, so on the previous um ordinance and this one, they're gonna come back to us for a second reading. And then after that, they go to the town and the city?
Um, tomorrow we will send them, because the town and the city require, the law requires we give them thirty days to review. They have to get any comments back to us.
Oh.
After the second reading, once they're adopted by the board, then we let the town and city know, then they have to take it to their councils for ratification.
So these say we're adopting ordinances, not codes, right? Even though the ordinance is incorporating a code. And I thought the whole reason we had ordinances or one of the reasons we had ordinances in the first place is the city and the town don't get to say anything about ordinances, they only get to say things about codes.
Correct, sir, so we took our defensible space sections out of the codes because state law requires that the city and the town um ratified building standards. So we took all our non-building standards, you know, which were the defensible space, the fuel break requirements, out of this. So the board is the deciding factor for those. Um, but state law requires the building standards, codes and ordinances go for ratification.
Okay, and and one more, so on setbacks, so at the moment, and again, I know a little bit about it. Uh, I I think there are sort of normal fifteen foot setbacks for building a house, for example. You're saying that if, and and the city can give you a waiver and make it anything they want to, as long as the neighbors don't scream too much. Um, so are you saying that we will now also, you guys, we, you will also have a say so in I assume only in waivers, not in, if they do keep in those fifteen feet, we can't make it twenty, or can we?
Um, the current language in the wooi code in the SRA in the very high is thirty feet setbacks. Um, so if somebody wants to be less than thirty feet, um we have to give them the waiver. And I can't think of, we've already done that in areas, because that's been a requirement state responsibility area. So areas of Bolinger Canyon um have come to us and said, hey, I want to be closer to that property line than thirty feet. And we looked, are you immediately adjacent to another structure or propane tank, what are the vegetation requirements? So again, we work with the property owners to try to grant that. But there may be cases that, no, hey, there's a reason thirty feet, we don't want you, you know, immediately adjacent to another house where we can get the structure to uh structure ignition.
Well, so I'm, I guess I'm gonna think even harder about this. At the moment, fifteen feet, you know, was was a, I'm gonna guess an aesthetic thing that towns wanted. I'm gonna guess that most lots, even large lots, could not accommodate a thirty footer all the way around setback. I mean, there basically wouldn't be a place to build a house.
That's correct, sir.
Um, so that that's a a way, and again, you know, you guys are nice, but if we had a jerk that was our our fire marshal slash fire chief, whatever, uh they get to say no. And I'm not sure we want to be in that position, you know, that we want to give that kind of authority to our folks. And I, and and the way I, a a way is sort of a libertarian view of that is, you know, if you bought your piece of property and it had a fifteen foot setback requirement and all of a sudden the fire district or the state comes in and says that, oh, now there's a thirty foot setback, I would consider that to be a taking. It reduced the value of your lot and somebody needs to compensate somebody for that. Um, so I I'm not sure I feel comfortable about us having that kind of authority.
Understood, sir, that is the minimum code, we can't change that language that goes into effect January one of twenty six, whether we approve that or or disapprove that, because that's the the state minimum. What a property owner has the right to do is to appeal the decision of the fire code official. So if there was a case where I said, nope, you you can't do that, um that individual would have the right to come here in front of the board and appeal that decision.
So thirty feet all the way around is a lot of square footage, right? You know, if you had a, uh, that's a material percentage of the lot. And I'm gonna guess there are precious few houses that, because we, actually, I think, six months ago, eight months ago, we talked about, I think it was last, it was late last year, we talked about how many houses in Arinda and Maraga didn't, weren't sixty feet apart, because that was sort of the the high point for house to house burning, you know, that was the, if they were further than that, it was good, and if they weren't. And the answer was almost all houses in Arinda and Maraga are within sixty feet of each other.
Yes.
Which says that at the moment, you you couldn't replace your existing house on your lot. Um, and you're saying that the state just passed a law that said that?
Yes, sir, that is the minimum, that is the base language in the state code that goes into effect uh January one of twenty six. We can't lessen that, we have to enforce it, but the state does allow us to grant modifications. And currently today, that thirty foot setback goes, is in effect in state responsibility area. So when we grant that modification, I have to write a letter to the Board of Forestry saying why we're granting the modification and what modification it, we are allowing that's gonna provide for the same practical effect of having that thirty foot setback.
So this is the wooi code, but we, but at the moment, it would only, for the state, it only applies to the very high fire severity zone? Or both that and the and the high severity?
Is, right now, it applies to state responsibility area, January first of twenty six, it's gonna apply local responsibility area, um very high zones.
But we're gonna apply it to the whole district?
No, this is, yeah, this isn't one of the sections, we're sticking with the the very high.
Only the very high?
Yes, sir, this is, this section for the setbacks is chapter six. Chapter six only is going to apply to the very high. Um, chapters four and five, which are the building standards, will apply district wide. But I was just bringing it up because it it is a change. Um, and when we saw that and we saw the emergency regulations that the state fire marshal did, where they said, hey, the entire wooi code applies to um very high and high. We looked at it with uh John and Ruben and the off, our interpretation is the state fire marshal only has authority um per the state legislative, per the state legislator for building standards. Setbacks are not a building standard, so that will only apply in the very high. The state fire marshal doesn't have the authority to say setbacks apply in the high.
I I'm confused with what you just said, said the state fire marshal doesn't have any authority over setbacks.
They don't have authority to increase the setbacks to the high.
Um, but why do they have it, or, so it's not a generic statement that they don't have authority over setbacks, it's they don't have, why do they have it in the very high fires?
With the, through the legislative process and the code adoption process, they were, they took those sections of the law. The state legislator said, hey, create that wooi code. So they took the state, uh, the Board of Forestry regulations and Title fourteen, they included that in the wooi code. The state legislator said, take this wooi code and apply it to the very high. They included that in the WUII code. The state legislator said, take this WUII code and apply it to the very high. And there was also legislation that said parts of that WUII code will apply to the high. We interpret the state, Office of the State Fire Marshal's authority to apply to building standards. So the state fire marshal cannot take non-building standards and apply it to areas that the legislator didn't give them the authority to.
The legislature did give it to them in the very high fires.
In the very high.
Okay, that's what I missed. That's what we're doing. We're not doing anything more than the state requires.
Absolutely. When it comes to the setbacks, the building standards, we already apply district wide. But the, the setback issue will stay in the very high.
Okay. Don't buy land in the very high fires. Verland. Interesting. Thank you. Sorry.
Would you like to open public?
Open public comment for, on this agenda item?
So public comment is open. And we do not have any public comment.
This is Director Romer. I'd like to make a motion to introduce and waive the full reading of ordinance twenty six dash zero two. An ordinance of the M O F D adopting the twenty twenty five California WUII code, including specified appendices and as modified with local amendments, and adopting a finding that the ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And I believe that motion also has to include that we have and will be providing direction on any revisions and that the board shall direct staff to schedule the public hearing for January twenty first, twenty twenty six, at which time the board will consider enacting the proposed ordinance.
I'll second that.
Correct.
I'll second that excellent motion. Thank you.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye. Passes. Thank you.
All right.
On to nine point three, prescribed fire update.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Directors. Dennis Frain, Prescribed Fire Program Manager here at the district. I have a brief report on the status of the prescribed fire program. In twenty twenty five, we continue to develop both our internal expertise and inter-agency relationships with the support of the wildfire mitigation specialists and Contra Costa County Crew Twelve. Pile burning started on January seventh, twenty twenty five, and we concluded that project on May second. The district planned to burn piles on forty-two days during that period. Ten of the planned days had to be canceled because personnel either couldn't get to the pile because of poor road conditions or trail conditions. The crews were not available for the project or the project was out of prescription. The prescriptions constraints were generally due to the wind direction potentially impacted some smoke sensitive sites, things like schools and residential areas. And all staff burned six hundred and ninety-five piles and reduced one thousand five hundred and twenty-five tons of material. There's a next slide, Marcia, I think. So this is the, the, tunnel, East Bay Hill shade of fuel break, and that kind of purple line down the middle represents Pinehurst Road and the piles that were burned in the vicinity of Canyon. And that's where the majority of that work was done, although there were several other project areas that we did that. Go to the next slide, Marcia. In addition to pile burning, the district attempted ten days of understory slash broadcast burning of the ten. Five days had to be postponed due to crew availability and/or the project site being out of prescription. The broadcast burn included Sleepy Hollow School, which was cooperative with the East Bay Municipal Utility District, the Arinda View, which we used the Confire Crew Twelve, Segurite Land Trust, which was a combination of the East Bay Regional Parks crews, our crews and Cal Fire, the Maraga Ridge Top Fuel Break, which we did kind of one morning with just district crews. And then Flicker Ridge and Canyon, which we tried two weeks ago and had kind of limited success because we'd had so much rain and the fuel moisture was pretty hot. In total, the broadcast burn acres in twenty twenty five was only twenty-two acres. Currently planning for prescribed fire projects in twenty twenty six is well underway and they include projects at Flicker Ridge, Segurite Land Trust. I think we can do twenty to sixty acres back in that area. Wagner Ranch Nature Area, we walked that property earlier this week with the fire marshal and I and the John Muir Land Trust folks. We think there's, I think there's ten plus acres plus a number of vegetation management pile burning projects that I think will shortly materialize there. The Maraga and Arinda Ridge Top Fuel Breaks, which was the, the project that started at Bella Vista and Maraga and would eventually hopefully bring all the way to the ream tank at, on the border of Lafayette Reservoir. Bear Ridge H O A, we have four acres slated up there. Arinda View, three acres, and then Pinehurst Canyon Shade of Fuel Break. Working with the East Bay Municipal Utility District to maintain that fuel break project would be about eight acres. In total, the acres planned for twenty twenty six at this time are just over a hundred acres. In addition to collaborating, in addition, the district is collaborating with adjacent agencies on both pile and broadcast burns. These include pile burns in the Tilden Nature Area, which is within our district with the East Bay Regional Park District and their staff has created three to four hundred piles in the Eucalyptus Forest, which is very amiable fuels. We said that we would assist them in, in getting that project underway. Working with the East Bay Regional Park District and East Bay Mud to burn Eucalyptus Grove, understory burn it up on Nimitz Way, which is up in that north wind area that would be very hazardous in a high wind situation. Not so much for our district residents, but the Tilden Nature Area and the communities of Berkeley, El Cerrito and Kensington. And then we're again looking to collaborate with East Bay Mud to remove some more fuel behind San Pablo Reservoir in the form of their log decks that they've been building all, all summer and fall. Coincidentally, just an item of interest, one of the burns that we did was at the Arinda View, the, yeah, in the Arinda View area, and I think I reported before that the, the homeowner's association, the owners association purchased some native wildflower seed. That seed has been spread just before this rainy period. And I think some of the neighbors up there are quite excited to see what, what evolves from that this spring. Staff noted several key points during the year, one of which was that resource and crew availability is often our constraining factors. We're very fortunate to have good support from Cal Fire, the Park District and Contra Costa County and, and other agencies in the area. They, they are very willing to come and help us burn as, as their crew time allows. District residents have been very supportive. The project that we did a couple of weeks ago, right next to homes at the top of Redwood Highway in the community of Canyon was well received by the community association and they, they were supportive there. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that our relationship with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has come quite a, quite a ways. They're, they've been very supportive of all of our projects, encouraging us to burn and in fact have called me several times and said, looks like you've got a good burn window here coming up next week. You know, do you have any projects that you could do? Looking historically, that has not been the case, but the staff there now has, has been very good. This was for information only and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm glad to hear there's improvement with some of the other agencies. Is that true of other agencies as well? Have we had?
I've heard varying reports and I think it depends on the, the, the specific, the specific project. I just heard of a project that was going to be up in Napa County that for some reason that the Air Quality Management District said, no, you can't do it. And it may be because of there was an inversion and some very specific things. But we've been fortunate enough to be able to work around those constraints with them.
Good. Great. Thank you.
I, I have one question. Two properties I didn't see on the list, and there's probably an explanation, is Oak Park and Painted Rock, which I know we've done before. How, how does that work? When do you decide when? I mean, I know both those areas pretty well and they, they sure look overgrown to me, but is there a cycle to do those or?
So Painted Rock, we, we had approached the John Muir Land Trust, who operates that eighty acre parcel. They, since we got the grant for them to do the grazing, if you've been by there, there's very little fuel left over on that hill. We did talk to the rancher, the, the V C up there and said, hey, we want to burn. Amounted to about four acres across the top of the ridge. And he said, you know, the girls just need that four acres of grass. So it was, it was kind of a, a compromise deal. And, and actually have looked at some other alternatives to creating that extra working space for our folks and, and talk with some, the stewardship group at the John Muir Land Trust about maybe spraying that top thirty feet of that road with molasses so the cows would eat that down first and it would hold it, hold it over the winter. We're, we're trying to do a little innovation there.
All right.
And then Oak Park, the chief sent me up there last year to look at it and, you know, were interested. I'd be most interested in creating that fuel break along the top of the ridge there on Donald Drive. They had already gone up there and weeded that property. And it, you know, wouldn't have bought us anything to spend time and money going up and trying to burn it. This year, we haven't approached the city yet, but it's certainly on the agenda to talk to them about that.
Okay, great.
Great.
I think the city's very good. Thank you very much. More, more open to those kinds of things lately, too. Thank you.
We can open public comment for item nine point three. And we do not have any public comment.
Okay, on to nine point four, annual review approval and appointment of twenty twenty sixteen in ad hoc committees and district liaisons.
Good evening, Directors. The next item is one that we normally handle in December, but because we're not having a meeting in December, we put it on for this month. This is just for the board to consider if they want to make any changes to the standing ad hoc committees or the district liaison positions. In front of you, we have a slide that has all the current ad hoc committees with the directors that are on each committee and the district liaison positions. Staff is willing to make any changes that the board sees fit on those.
Well, I, I just had a question. The, the next item is to elect officers.
Yeah, that's nine point five.
And I don't know if this, I, I don't know how the other directors feel. I, I kind of, I, I should have mentioned to you before, but I kind of felt maybe that should come before this. Does it make any difference to anybody? I don't, I don't know. I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
Yeah, why?
Well, I mean, if we elect new president, new vice president, maybe that will affect if they're going to be on these committees or not. I don't know. Does it? I, I'm just throwing it out there to, do we need to? You don't think so?
I personally don't think it makes any difference.
Doesn't matter?
What question you have versus what committees you're on. I, I don't think we.
Maybe not. I just wanted to.
assign, you know, the president to be on this committee. I think it's just whoever wants to be on it, so.
Okay, I, I just, I'm not saying we should, but I just thought about it. That's all. Okay. So we can do this. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Do any people have, any of the board members have any committees that they, they're not on, they'd like to be on or vice versa, that they are on that they don't want to be on?
Well, Director Jex isn't here tonight, so he should just be on everything, right?
There you go.
Exactly.
You too, Greg. He's actually.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm at least have a voice. I have a voice.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, as an example, the Audit Committee, Hassler and Jex are the two guys that probably have the most knowledge for the Audit Committee. And they're doing a good job and.
Well, should we just, how about just going on the list?
You still want to be on the?
Let's just go down the list from top to bottom. How's that, that we looking at?
Facilities project that you and I are on. Well, the, the, the top three there.
Yeah.
So just for clarification, the Audit Committee, there's no changes?
I would propose that at least.
Okay.
I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
The next three that happened to both of us. I think there's a fair amount of learning that has already happened on those and I think it would make sense to have continuity there personally, but.
I, I think we were purposeful on when we did the facilities project and put you two on it because of that, right? When we set up the facilities ad hoc committee.
That's okay with me. I'm happy to keep going on those.
Okay, so no changes to the facility?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. I think the next one, the grant program to promote district, I, I don't know that we're going to keep that one, right? I mean.
We, we just started it last month.
Yeah, but we've already met. I don't, I mean, we could keep it, but it's not going to be much.
No, we didn't come up with anything. I think we need to come up with a conclusion.
Directors, if I may on that one, staff was directed to create a draft document for the ad hoc committee to review, then to bring back for the full board on consideration of a process to evaluate requests when they come through and staff's still working on that.
And I think we probably need to meet with you.
Yeah.
Provide what direction, if any, that we're going to have staff work on a draft. So I don't think we're ready to disband the committee.
Okay.
I, I mean, we did have a meeting with the, the Firewise folks and we got some good input and we have, I think we have a, a pretty good understanding of where we're going on that. And it might result in less staff time that, than anybody thought. But I, I don't think that the committee is ready to disband yet.
Okay.
So no changes on that committee?
I'm willing to continue to serve. It doesn't make sense.
That's fine.
On the next one, if you have a strong feeling that you want to be on the joint fire prevention with the city of Arinda, then that's fine with me. If you want to give that up for a year, I'd be, I'd volunteer to serve on it. But I don't have a strong feeling either way. What do you feel about it?
Me?
Yes.
I would stay on there. What about you, Craig?
I'm, I'm happy to stay on there.
Right. I mean, at some point, I, I may want to go back on that committee, but I'm willing to concede for the next year that I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay. So I think that basically goes through all the standing committees and the ad hoc committees. We'll keep them the way they are.
We have the town of Maraga.
The town of Maraga.
I think on the town of Maraga, we stayed the same for right now, since Director Jackson and I both live there, but it's been slow to get started.
Right.
It just started like a month ago, so.
Started like a month ago, had a meeting, got canceled. There's not been any one set, so.
It makes sense to have.
Just that you know, the LAFCO committee liaison, I mean, I look at their agenda. I just review their agenda that they send to me. I see if there's anything that would affect our district. We only haven't seen anything lately, so if anyone wants that, they're welcome to have it. I mean, that.
Do we need to have one of those?
You know, I, I look at the agenda and, you know, we're part of this group.
You never know. In the, in the county of Solano, suddenly it's become very important because of the California Forever and the annexation by California Forever. There's a New York Times article.
Yeah, I saw that.
So LAFCO can be very important and we need to monitor what goes on in LAFCO. But I think you're correct. In this county right now.
You want, you want it?
I don't. No, I gave it up to you last year. I'll let you know. Anything appearing in the New York Times or anything else, it needs to be paid attention.
Director Jex.
Sir, I was going to say for the LAFCO staff, myself or Deputy Chief Lambert can monitor that and LAFCO can reach out to us or if we notice something.
Yeah. Well, if you guys want to read the event in Judd instead of one of us, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Don't really do it.
Never had, it never hurts to have several people keeping an eye on it. Yeah, so you can just leave it like it is. That's fine. Yeah.
Okay, and.
Town of Maraga.
District liaisons for Marag, Arinda and Maraga.
Yeah, I, I'm still willing to do that. I talk to the mayor probably every other month, so.
Okay.
And city of Arinda, no change on that?
I'm happy to do that one, too. That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, on to elections, I guess. Or do we, do we need to make a motion to approve all these?
Yes, we do.
Who wants to make a motion to approve all these, the way we've talked about?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to keep, I think we're keeping all the committee and liaison roles as they are in the, in the new, in the new calendar year.
Okay.
Do we hear a second?
This is Romer. I'll second.
Okay.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye. Okay, on to the annual review, oops, sorry, the election of board officers for calendar year twenty twenty six.
Good evening, Directors. Each year, in accordance with Section ten of the Rules of Procedures Resolution twenty five dash zero three, the Board of Directors shall elect the following officers annually or as required after a general district election. Officers are president, vice president and second vice president. The district board, board may also elect such additional officers as may be created. Yes, sir.
Well, I guess I was going to jump to the motion. Well, I guess I was going to jump to the motion, but I if we're going to deliberate first, I would just say that I think that this board has established and should follow a great tradition of succession. It gives each of us the opportunity or the burden of serving as the president, as it may be. And if we just move up from one year to the next, that that would make Director Jorgens the president for next year. Director Danziger, the first vice president for next year. And I think that by order of succession, it would call upon Director Jax to act as the second vice president. Myself, Director Romer, and Director Hassler, having served as a a great board president over the last year, would step back into the position of director. That succession seems to be working fine, and I say we stick with it.
Fine with me?
Fine with me.
Unless somebody doesn't want that.
Well, the only the only thing is that we don't have Director Jex here, but since he's only being nominated to second vice president, the the function would be that only if the president and the first vice president were not available, would he be called upon to act as the director? If he's uncomfortable with that, I'd be surprised, but isn't that something we could take up at the next? Actually, I think we are stuck with that, but I I just don't see it as a problem. I mean, I think we were nominating Director Jax as president, and he had some reason he didn't want to serve, then maybe we wanted to ask for his opinion first, but I'm guessing he's going to be okay with that.
I think so, too. It's a motion to adopt.
This is Director Romer. I would make a motion to adopt as the current twenty twenty five board officers.
No, no, for the twenty six.
Twenty twenty six. Do we have to have public comment first, though?
We do need to have public comment.
Okay, well, then I'll have public comment before I make my motion.
And so I'm going to just fast forward because originally I was going to go through each position for nominations and and emotion, but
And but I think we did it last year. We just did it with one. It saved time. I'm happy to do it if any if council or anybody feels that there's some procedural reason why we should do that, but if there's no really, it's a unanimous
Let's go ahead and open public comment. And so we do not have any public comment?
Okay, so I'll close, I'll close public comment.
I mean, it's it's not going to save that much time. Do we want to just proceed on each?
We don't have
Just do it together.
You can go ahead and do it on a single motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Director.
This is Director Romer. I nominate for twenty twenty six MOFD Board President, Director Craig Jorgens. I nominate as first vice president for twenty twenty six, Director Steve Danziger. I nominate for as second vice president, Director John Jax. And I don't know that I need to nominate, but we'll just let it, for the record, Mike Romer and Greg Hassler will be directors.
You do have to have actually Greg go to the bottom of the list.
Greg goes to the bottom of the list and I'm the second to the bottom of the list. So I would be just after Director Jax, which might or might not get me president in a few years. Is that an adequate motion?
It's a great motion.
All right.
Second.
Our show.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye. The motion passes.
Congratulations, everybody.
Committee reports?
Nothing from the Audit Committee.
Joint Fire Prevention Committee. I don't think we have anything because we just had a meeting about that. There's nothing to report from that either.
Town of Maraga has
Nothing to report, yeah.
And then the grant program?
Well, we met. Director Romer and I met with representatives.
Mark Evans and Rob Schroeder.
Yeah. Rob, we got some good information.
About an hour and fifteen minutes.
Yeah, about how they how they operate. And I think we'll have to come back to the the group, maybe with a, maybe maybe in the next meeting next year to talk further about it. Maybe we'll, I'll I'll ask at another item, maybe to put it on the agenda for later, so.
And it may be that somebody else reaches out to meet with us, or we might decide to reach out to somebody else. We'll just keep those options.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I gotta go. I I misread me personally, the first one or the second one. There actually was a meeting of the two by two in Arinda. Yeah, I Yeah. It said fire prevention and others and how I think about the name of it. Sorry. And I guess I would just say that, you know, we had great presentations from the chief and some of the the Arinda Fire Prevention folks. There's been a lot of progress with, you know, their chipping program. They, I would say that that at least those two city council members are very interested in what we're doing. I think the new city manager is being very proactive, much more proactive than the prior person. And I I think that it's a healthier relationship than we have had in the past, and I think a very productive relationship. And it appears there's a lot of good coordination going on, so I think that's, you know, things are things are going well there.
I would just add that the city of Arinda is getting ready to roll out something called Arinda Ready. That's going to have a lot of another space to provide resources for the community, not only on fire, but evacuations and 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 other information they would need. And I think it's going to be a good resource for the for everybody, and it's getting pretty close. I think they said next month, so. I'm sure the chief probably knows about it and will will take an active part in it, so.
And the other thing, just for the folks from Maraga, the the city of Arinda, I guess this year, that they have a law, whatever you call things, that code in Arinda that says if you are neighboring a piece of, you know, like a public right of way, that you're responsible for maintaining it even though you don't own it. And the city of Arinda historically has said, you know, you got to do it for weight of eight minute things. And they this year have been more lenient and proactive about the city doing more of that kind of work rather than requiring, you know, than trying to go around and force the the local residents to do that, which I hope has been more productive and allowed things to happen and get a better result than trying to enforce it in little tiny pieces. I don't know if that's been true or not, but it sounded better.
Yeah.
Right. Sorry. Now we can go on to the next.
And then for the facility projects for administration, forty one and forty five.
Yeah.
Well, we I mean, just taking, I think we could just take all of those together. I mean, they're all related. We've met at the at I'm not sure how much I could say here.
Yeah, I was just going to say be careful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've met and
Close session.
We've met and we're discussing options. How's that?
Right.
That's all.
Well, we have talked to to the to the architect and have done some brainstorming with him and some, you know, going through scenarios about what the pros and cons of various alternatives that we have. So we have been making progress on that.
Hmm. Yeah.
All righty, and we will open public comment for committee reports. We do not have any public comment. Future agenda items?
I I do have one. I'd like to get a a more than just during the chief's report, I'd like to get a an item in the new year on the single role update. Deputy chief gave us, you know, a lot of update today, but I'd like to see that in a more formal report, like, you know, I didn't know about the staffing and and who's on board and what what it's going to look like. I've actually, in the in the last few days, I've gotten a couple of emails and and a few calls based on an article that was in the Arinda News, and some people have questions and I have questions, too, and I'd just like to get a full report, you know, what about the rollout, the timeline? You know, what it's going to really look like. You know, I I didn't know, I really actually didn't know that they were working the same shifts as firefighters. I wasn't sure about that, so. Just so whatever we can get on an update. And then I I guess this is sort of an agenda item. You you had Deputy Chief had a photograph in there of the new ambulance and the new Life Pack thirty five, so if we can get, you know, we've done it before right here. If we can have the, if the new ambulance is ready by the next meeting, maybe just maybe you can bring it up here and show us and, you know, show us what it looks like as well as the life pack. I think that's, you know, beneficial to the to the directors to see, to actually see it.
It's it's the same ambulance we've had before. They just put them in a new truck.
Yeah, I just want to see a nice, clean, new one. I know it is, but
It's only the truck part of it that's new.
Yeah, I get it. But we spent a lot of money. I want I want to see the chassis. I want to see the life packs.
Can I recommend we do that before the board meeting and, you know, start a little early and
Yeah, you can do that. Something, we've done that before.
Yes, sir. We'll do just like what we've done.
Maybe if those new, maybe if the new single roles are on duty, maybe we can have them come over and you know, see us.
I do have a comment, and this is Director Romer. I don't know that this needs to be a specific future agenda item, but I raised an issue with the chief earlier that I think should be something that's on all of our radar screens. Again, without mentioning the New York Times too often, they ran an article today about the nationwide crisis that's been occasioned by the unaffordability of homeowners insurance from Florida to California to to North Dakota. It's a slow moving crisis, and there's a number of reasons for that. Construction costs, the increased risk of hurricanes, wildfires and other natural disasters. The problem, and we may be able to have, and and one of the reasons I mention is that looking over the, as Director Danzer said, very well done, long range financial report. It seemed to me that we're a little bit down in our property tax revenues. Now, maybe that's just a temporary thing that has to do with, you know, getting, not having gotten the revenues that we're expecting to get. But on a long term basis, the concern is that as homeowners insurance policies skyrocket, in part due to reinsurance, which is skyrocketing, it's causing in many areas of the country a decline in property taxes along the coast of Florida, along the coast of Louisiana. Parts of California, particularly up in the Sierra Nevada, which are really in danger of wildfires. And the homeowners insurance rates are skyrocketing up there. The effect that that has is that in those areas, due to the multiple problems, if homeowner, if the if if homeowners are unable to afford those, then prices go down. If prices go down, eventually property tax revenues go down, and that's something that affects our long term planning. Again, I don't know whether this needs to be a specific agenda item, but I want to call that to the attention to our staff and other members of the board. It's something at some point that we need to keep a close attention on.
Enough said.
Any more agenda items? Greg, anybody? Okay.
Okay. We will open public comment. We do not have public comment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Vice President Jorgens?
Aye.
Time is eight fifty one.
You're adjourned.
Yeah.
Okay, that's pretty close.
Hi, Greg.
All right, bye.
Have fun down there.
All right, I will.
Carefully.
Greg, thanks for your credit on the board. I should have mentioned that one in the one agenda. You did a great